Yeah, of course.
Now, you can remember our citizens being in those sessions and how complicated this movement.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's March 19th, 2024 City Council meeting. I would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Ronnie Wall for tonight's invocation.
Pray with me. We bow our heads to ask for a path that leads us, to use our talents to the best of our ability for the people of this city. Let us all be truly thankful for another day, to rejoice in our families, as we pray for those alone and sick, to appreciate what we have, and to remember there are many with much less. As we work through our busy lives, remind us to save some time to help someone make it through theirs. Guide us to enjoy the day we have and glad for the one tomorrow. And always, we pray for peace. Please be with this council and staff members as we make decisions that will affect our citizens and our communities.
I'm in. Thank you. At this time, I think we have some guests in the audience. I think we have Burlington Youth Council. Is that correct here? Maggie Massey, Maggie, you want to come up and tell us a little bit about what you guys are doing this evening?
Okay. So, I'm with the Burlington Youth Council. We are under the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department, run out of that ways youth center. This year, we have around 20 kids signed up. It's the law of two-thirds when it comes to teenagers. About 12 of them shall show up to every meeting, but it's never the same 12. We've done community service projects and volunteer projects all year long. Our recent project that we're working on is a little library to be placed down at the new playground at City Park. It'll have books in it. The kids will then take on checking and making sure it has books in it all year round and stuff and everything. Then we have books at that ways to be able to replenish that and everything as it goes on and everything. It'll be decorated and that sort of thing. And so far this year, they completed 405 community service hours collectively. So, we're really proud of them this year.
Good to have everybody with us this evening. Our next item is an announcement of a community project, and we're going to move that down just a little bit. Yeah, we're waiting on someone to come in. So, at this time, we will call on our City Clerk Beverly Smith for the Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts.
Members of council, it is my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Thank you. Our next item is the approval of minutes, March 5th, 2024 City Council meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the minutes. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, we will call for a motion.
A motion.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second on the adoption. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Our next item is the consent agenda item. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A is to approve a carnival permit application for Michael's Enterprises to operate beginning May 17th, 2024 through May 26th, 2024, weekdays from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. and from 4:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday. The carnival will be held at the Holly Hill Mall parking lot located on the southwest corner of International Drive and Ann Elizabeth Drive. Final inspections will be conducted on site, and the operation of the carnival is contingent upon meeting all insurance and inspection requirements. Item B is to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for April 2nd, 2024, to consider a voluntary contiguous annexation of a parcel located at 1652B Lower Hope Dell Road, parcel ID 140464. At this time, we will entertain a motion on the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor, if we have a motion, will we approve the consent agenda as it's submitted? We have a motion and a second for the approval of the consent agenda. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Our next item is public hearings. We'll move to public hearings this evening. Item one, a public hearing has been scheduled to receive public comments on a proposed consolidated plan for the fiscal year 2024 through '28 City of Burlington Community Development Block Grant Program. At this time, we'll recognize Michael Blair and there's Betty Autumn May Smith from the PTRC on community development. Welcome.
I guess I'll come up here. Thank you, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. Just to give a quick little overview of what the consolidation plan is, the city of Burlington receives about just under $500,000 of community block grant funding every year. So, every five years or so, we have to do a consolidation plan, which at the end of the first year of the solid plan, is the first annual plan of that particular consolidation plan year. So, you know, the CDBG activities run from public services like homeless shelters to rehabilitating women and their own housing, providing some elderly people, as well as projects that improve things like sidewalks, bike paths, public safety in modern areas as determined by HUD, such as tax coffers. So, the public hearing, and we really do want to get input on this. We've spent, we had two public meetings three weeks ago here in Burlington where we had people attend. We have had a survey out for over a month. Haven't received as many responses as we'd like. We'd like more, but we'll get that in. This is a draft of the plan received. It's not a complete plan by the end of the second public hearing, which would be the first meeting in May, I believe. That would be the completed plan. The only difference would be if any comments were received after that, it would serve as a point.
Any questions, council, on this item?
The next meeting says on the May, May 2nd.
First meeting.
Where's that meeting being held?
It'll be the public hearing.
Oh, it'll be here. Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yep, that is correct.
And you've already had two meetings. Is one of those the drink centers where you had a?
Yes, we have a public meeting at the Green Center and then at North Park, I don't know the public buildings. What's your attendance? Green Center had about 15 people show up, North Park, half of that. So, the attendance wasn't good, but we still got a good feedback, I believe. It's kind of hard, you know, I think you've probably discovered in different programs, newspaper ads, none of them work quite the same as they used to. Yeah, trying to use email routines essentially to get the word out sometimes helps, and it does to all people.
Is there a presentation or anything this evening, just public comments?
No, just public, hopefully some comments.
Yep. Okay, this is a public hearing. Any other questions on this? This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on the Community Development Block Grant Program. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Would you like to speak?
Yes.
Could anyone please come forward and state your name and address so that our City Clerk can record that, please?
My name is Shadi Poyiam. My address, you said it?
Yes, ma'am.
425 Richmond Avenue, Burlington. Walk your own two steps, too.
Thank you.
So, I want to get my thoughts together because I have a few questions about the block grant. Is there another meeting, not the public hearing, but is there another meeting like you had at the drink center in North Park?
Any other community meeting scheduled?
We had not planned one, but we certainly could have one. If we can get more people there, that'd be great.
Okay. Well, that's the thing, because I heard you only had 15, and I do know about the drink center meeting, but what, I heard you say we can do like homeless shelters, we can do, we can rehab houses, we can do sidewalks. Okay. What, let me just speak from what I would say. From what I have researched about this grant, it is, 70% of it has to be used in the impoverished neighborhoods. So, if 70% of that money is going to be used in the impoverished neighborhoods, we all know that the impoverished neighborhoods here, it would be the east side of Burlington. Have you decided what is best, and how do you determine what is best? Because by 15 people and seven people, and I'm an active member in the community, I do remember hearing about the drinks center meeting. However, that meeting was done at a time where I could not leave my daycare and go make that meeting. I do have a daycare that is downtown Burlington, right on Main Street, off of Main Street and Sixth Street, by Shoemakers, if you're familiar with that. I think that there needs to be another meeting to where we can try to get more people out, whether you have to use people in the community, members, myself, my colleague. We have nonprofits here. We can get more people out that understand what the impoverished neighborhoods need. When I first started my nonprofit, I started out on Hatch Street and wrong hood. My heart was there. My heart is still there. However, I did not have the funds to do what needed to be done to the building because I worked with the youth. We need a safe place for our youth. And that area is one of the areas where we need to see hope. We need to see hope. We need to see change. And I think that it's going to take more than 15 or seven people to say what needs to be done. And then, the lack of participation here. We know that there's a hard time getting us out here. We know that. But we are willing to do the work to get our people out here, to get what needs to be done so that we can get crime reduced, so that we can have more people going to work and more businesses thriving, black businesses in our neighborhoods. We need to see that. I'm from here, and I want to see that. I left here. I have lived in other areas. I'm a proud member of the military, so I know what it looks like outside of Alamance County. And we want to ride from west to east and see the same things.
So, the request would be for another community meeting, and we could count on you guys to try to help get some participation. Could staff work with PTRC on trying to organize that? So, we'll get another-
If you might give me my information, we can do that as well.
We'll get another community meeting planned, and in addition to that, there will be another public comment period, isn't that correct? So, there will be a couple of more, and then we have historical data, too, that maybe staff could help provide on what we've done in the past, because our funding has been pretty consistent historically, and that information is public on how the money's typically been used. So, it would be good to maybe share that with you guys, so you'd have some idea how it's been typically used in the past.
The other thing, too, Mr. Mayor, is most of the CDBG money has been spent in North Burlington and East Burlington, if I remember correctly.
Pretty much all of it.
Any project that's not directly to, let's say, public services, that's dealing with low-income either children or elder or whatever, homeless, is qualified by census block roots and census fact. Again, all those projects are all in low-income areas.
Is there a place where we can, I know you just said we get some historical data, but I tried to look back through a few things, but we could see where, because I can't, I can't see it. I was realized I don't see it. So, maybe if I could see it on paper, then maybe I'll say, okay, well, I see it, but because, again.
Great point.
Yep.
It's been hard for me, you know, being a new council member and coming in and studying the CBD, the funding, and to try to figure out like where it actually went, where have we actually used it at in prior years. It was hard information. I actually called our city management today to get some help myself. So, thank you for the bravery and for at least attending, and thanks for your service to our country as well.
Yep, thank you.
We'll definitely be in touch.
Yep.
Get your information.
And I would like access to the survey. So, is the survey still active?
It is.
Okay. If you guys can give that to us, if we can push it out as well to try to get some community feedback.
Yep, we'll get Beverly to get that to everyone in council.
I'll write this down.
Yes, ma'am.
So, hello. My name is Jackie Van Hook. I am a-
Ms. Van Hook, what's your dress for?
My dress. So, my dress is 124 Flower Street, Grand North Carolina.
Thank you.
Now, I grew up in Burlington. Very well familiar with Alamance County, we got born right here. So, I grew up on East End, of course, and my concerns, I am very familiar with the census. I have nonprofits, mainline resources, and we're fairly new, but voter registration, census, resources to the community with things like youth. I was taking clothes out of my home, giving to the homeless people, making sure that they had stuff. So, I'm very, very familiar with the homeless shelter here in Alamance County. So, as I know of and to my knowledge, they don't get too much funding.
The homeless shelter?
They don't get too much funding. So, what I put together was to provide resources for outside means other than shelters. So, if this grant is to help with homeless shelters, people that are in low-income areas, families of that sort, all of these things that's going on, I'm like Shadi, like, I don't see it, but I would definitely love to see it on paper. That way, I can have my knowledge when I go to my next meeting. And I would love to provide a space for you to have your next meeting, your public speaking. I will provide that space for you, and I will make sure that I get this community out to speak. You can hear their concerns. We can voice our concerns, and it would definitely be helpful for, you know, minorities. Like, I want to be able to be a resource to this county. Like, I grew up here. I don't want to see, Alamance County has potential. Every day I see it going down a little bit, and then it goes up and then it goes back down. But at the same time, we all have jobs in it. If we all come together and do things, you know, together as a whole, instead, I didn't know anything about the meeting that you had at either place, and I'm on Facebook every day. So, do you have a social media platform?
We do. City of Burlington does.
Yep.
Okay. So, I am a follower of City of Burlington, and maybe I overlooked something, but I'll definitely go back and pull some stuff up. And I start posting stuff, too, to let people know, you need to go on City of Burlington, go on their website, go on their social media page, to look at some of the stuff that they're putting up, because I'm out in the community. I was a manager with A U T, and I'm driving all of these streets, Davis Street, Morton Town. I'm looking at all the rundown homes. So, now, I'm trying to put another business together to start renovating some of these houses, some of these buildings. That way, public housing can be like the news. Like, we need to get this side of town, we need to get east side Burlington built up, just like west side is. You don't go in certain areas on West End and see rundown houses and buildings. But as soon as you get past Fisher Street, it's going down. Restaurants, nothing is being built. But at the same time, if the county's spending money on that end, it must be buying groceries, put in grocery store, you know, doing something else, because I don't, I don't live on street.
Well, we appreciate your assistance in putting this together.
And I'll give you my information as well, email, telephone number, social media, all that. But I'll definitely provide a space for you to have me with. It's not this. I would not pray you for it on my phone. I moved the ground because I looked up on my house, but I promise me it's in Burlington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to close the public comments. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Okay. So, thank you. And our next public hearing will be April 2nd, is that right?
May.
In May? Okay. Okay, in the May meeting. Okay. Yep, thank you. You know, and I will just add one of the comment. I know in the past, the homeless shelter, I know we spent about $80,000 from CDBG money. I think we put a roof on the shelter, and we did a major renovation of the kitchen. So, we spent some significant money at the homeless shelter.
We can put all that down onto one page.
Yep. It's good information, and it shows the, just how well this program has worked for the City of Burlington, and we appreciate you guys and the PTRC for helping us with it. Yep.
I think there's also, Mayor, I think there is a distinguishing, I don't think the residents actually know if it's county or city funding through the program, through the community block. So, I think they feel like it's a county-wide program, but it's actually coming directly. Just to clarify, that grant is coming directly only from the City of Burlington. It's direct funds that we receive in order for that program to work. So, it's not county-initiated. It's all city.
Just to clarify, ma'am, were you being working with Ms. Poyiam? Is that what you said earlier, the two of you?
Well, we have two separate entities, but we also work together. We collab on-
For your meeting? For your meeting.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we can. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate you folks being with us. Our next item, item two, a public hearing has been scheduled to consider a request to rezone property from medium-density residential, or MDR, to high-density residential, HDR. This property is located east of Kirkpatrick Road, south of Grand Oaks Boulevard, and north of Ethan Point Drive, addressed as 1210 Kirkpatrick Road, and consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 133004. At this time, we'll recognize our planning director, Jamie Lawson.
Good evening, everyone. This item was presented to you at your March 4th work session, and it has been properly advertised for a public hearing. As you recall, the applicant is seeking a rezoning request from medium-density residential. That's shown here on the zoning map in yellow, and their request is to go to high-density residential. They are not seeking a limited-use rezoning. This is a conventional or general rezoning, which would allow all of the uses in the high-density residential zoning district. Any future development of the site would have to go through the technical review committee. Staff is recommending this request per option number two provided in your consistency statement sheet. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the request unanimously at their meeting in February, and the staff report that's included in your packet describes the area and the rezoning as being, you know, consistent with the other zoning and other residential development surrounding the property. The applicant is in the audience in case you have any questions for them, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me.
Jamie, it's a broad question, but technically, the difference in terms of housing numbers here, from medium-density density, high-density density, what, not to be specific, but what could that lead to in terms of number of units?
Yeah, so this property is roughly two acres. So, if you were, it depends on what type of residential zoning, residential development you're seeking, but let's just stay with single-family detached. Under the current zoning, it's 4.85 units per acre, no matter what type of residential you're building, single-family, detached, single-family, attached, multifamily. If you were to change the zoning to the high-density residential zoning, it increases to seven units per acre for a single, so roughly under-doubled. But seven units per acre for single-family detached, nine units per acre for single-family attached, and 30 units per acre for multifamily. So, the biggest change is multifamily.
Right.
And the property to the north, you see, if you're looking at the zoning map that I have illustrated, the property to the north went through a rezoning, the very same rezoning request in 2022, where they also amended the zoning. A portion of that property was O and I, but the entire site now is high-density residential.
So, this would just sort of clear up the orange. It would kind of clean all that up.
That's, that's exactly what-
Put a mirror on each side?
Pardon me?
Would it be the same on each side?
Yeah. Yep. Right in here. See, this is the property that's seeking the rezoning.
Got it.
And then, to the north and to the east, this entire area was rezoned.
And the property to the south, then?
That's Ethan Point. That's already developed.
Yeah.
So, if this was to pass, and you look at the same map, all of that would just be orange?
Right. Similar to on the other side of Grand Oaks as well.
So, with that being said, then, the existing infrastructure in terms of your roadways and so forth, I'm sure the utilities are good, but is the roadways in reference to access, could that handle all of this in terms of one multifamily?
So, when they would come in for a development proposal, we would go through that TRC process with them, and then depending upon the number of units, a TIA or a traffic impact analysis would be completed. At that time, we would know what impact it would have on the existing roadways.
And if indeed it took some modification, that would be up to develop or to help with that?
Most likely. It, you know, depends on what the recommendation is, but.
Any other questions for Jamie or any for the applicant?
No, both Grand Oaks and Kirkpatrick State.
Right. So, both roads are DOT jurisdiction anyway?
Yeah. So, DOT would weigh in on-
Correct.
But if there's no other questions, this is a public hearing on item two concerning this matter. So, at this time, we will open the floor for any public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak during this public comment period? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Any other thoughts or comments concerning this item? Just for clarification, Jamie, we have seen no plans or anything on this item. Okay. All right, there's no other thoughts or comments. We'll entertain a motion considering the rezoning. I think it's option two is stated by Jamie. the rezoning. I think it's option two is, is stated by Jamie. If it was for approval, staff recommends and P N Z recommends. At this time, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve. I make a motion to approve the request to rezone properties from medium density residential, M D R, to high density residential, H D R. The property is located east of Kirkpatrick Road, south of Grand Oaks Boulevard, and north of Ethan Point Drive, addressed as 1210 Kirkpatrick Road, consisting of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 112932. And while the request is inconsistent with the future land use map in section four, land use of the comprehensive plan, the request is compatible with the existing residential uses in the area. The requested use is inconsistent with proposed future land use, which recommends this area for industrial development. The action is reasonable and the public interest in that. The comprehensive plan encourages a sustainable balance of land uses. The request is compatible with the existing zone and land uses in the area.
Thank you. We have a motion for the approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Thank you. Appreciate
Thank you very much.
applicant for being here. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move backwards in our agenda. I think our special guest of honor has arrived. So at this time, we'll call on our Assistant City Manager, Rachel Kelly, for a, an announcement on the Community Project Funding Award.
Yes, thank you. And thanks for moving the item down the agenda just a little bit. Tonight, we wanted to take a minute to announce that $963,000 has been designated for the Burlington Alamance Regional Communications and Record Management Update, CAD R M S, we'll follow those forward, in the Consolidated Federal Appropriations Act of 2024 that was signed into law March ninth. This funding comes as a result of the city's request for community project funding to Congresswoman Fushi's office this time last spring. She was able to review projects submitted for consideration and put fifteen of those forward to the House Appropriations Committee in 2024, and ours was one of the projects she chose to move forward. We requested 5.1 million for that project, and she did put forward that entire request, which we greatly appreciate. At the end, after, you know, the, the committee does their work, we ended up with 963,000, which is certainly a step in the right direction. I also want to mention that Congresswoman Fushi submitted a request for the Burlington Housing Authority to submit a $3 million request for their RED conversion program. Eight hundred and fifty was secured in that Appropriations Act. The city's project team from City County for the regional CAD R M S is currently evaluating vendors. Next week, actually, they'll have the, the third out of four week-long demonstrations of the software. Quotes are certainly coming in high, more around $7 million. So we will certainly be approaching our federal delegation this year to see if we can secure additional support. Not only do those federal dollars alleviate the city and county's budgetary pressures, but it lowers the barrier of entry for all of the public safety agencies in the community. So we can have everyone participate in a unified system, which will improve safety for residents and first responders. So that's in everyone's favor, and we'll keep working towards that goal. But as Mayor Butler referenced, Congresswoman Fushi's District Director, Selena Thomas, is here with us tonight. So I'd like to invite you up to say a couple of words. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Greetings, Mayor, Mayor Burlington, and fellow council members. Also want to say a special welcome to the City Manager and Assistant City Managers. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide just some remarks on behalf of Congresswoman Fushi. She would have been here, but she's voting tonight. So I just wanted to share just a few brief remarks that she wanted to pass along. Due to the diligence of the city of Burlington, being proactive in identifying some issues that we wanted to address through this process, we were able to secure these funds for the community. And as you know, Congresswoman Fushi spent twenty years as an administrator with Chapel Hill Police Department. So she knows the importance of having the appropriate technology to do what you need to do for your law enforcement. So with that being said, I wanted to thank you all for being such great partners in the work that we do. I would hope that we can continue that relationship going forward for as long as this area is in the Congresswoman's jurisdiction. So please do not hesitate to reach out to us. We want to continue to be a partner to all of the residents in Burlington and Alamance County. It has a special place in my heart because my parents actually lived in Burlington as well. So I want to say thank you to, to your staff who have been really helpful in providing the information that was needed to help us with determining the projects that we were going to prioritize for this cycle of our C P Fs. I mentioned to your staff as well that we are hoping that the next cycle is right around the corner. So hopefully we have some announcements sooner or later for more applications in the coming future. But the last thing I just wanted to say is I'm also very proud that we are able to make that an investment in affordable housing rehab in partnership with the Burlington Housing Authority. And I just wanted to always encourage you all to feel free to call us if there's ever anything, or email us, or however you want to reach out to us, if there's ever any way that we can be helpful on the federal level. So with that, thank you for being partners, and we're really excited for Burlington and Alamance County with this.
Well, thank you so much for being here, and more importantly, for the responsiveness that you guys have provided us. And the RED conversion was important to us and lobbying on behalf of the Burlington Housing Authority, and it was very important. And the assistance that has been provided by Congresswoman Fushi's office and your assistance has been just incredible. And we want to tell you how much we appreciate it. We do have a letter of appreciation. I want to come down and get a photo with you guys, and I want to give you a round of applause. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's good, too. We certainly appreciate the dogmatic approach that, that you guys took with this. We realize how competitive all of these grants are, and there's needs everywhere. So we need not to be honest about that. And it's, it's kind of refreshing to see a, a new face in Congress working this hard for the community, and we very appreciate that. Now, any other council comments?
I'd just like to underscore the earlier remarks. We really do appreciate the responsiveness, and we very, very much appreciate it. You know, we, and I, we look forward to continuing the relationship in many other projects. Thanks again.
Thank you. My thanks as well. Just feel comfortable.
Thank you. Moving to new business, our next item under new business is item number three. City Council will consider adopting proposed amendments to the resolution establishing the Arboretum Technical Advisory Board. At this time, we'll recognize our Recreation and Parks Director, Tony Lawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, it's a pleasure to be here to especially talk about your arboretum. I want to call up Rhett Davis. Rhett is our board chair. Been that way ever since it was created a couple of years ago, and we're very thankful for Rhett.
Rhett, come on up here, dog stranger to that podium.
I might ask you a question.
Rhett is also known as the king of trees. I've depended on him for many years to keep our trees and our parks healthy and safe, and also in other places in the city. So we appreciate it.
Anyway, our current arboretum board consists of eleven members, and they've been very active members, about one hundred percent attendance at all of our meetings, which is great for volunteer advisory board. And they all have a really sincere interest in, in the well-being of the arboretum. And with, with this board and New Leaf and the city, we've done a lot of good things in the arboretum. I hope everybody here takes a chance to walk through that, or at least drive by and see what's going on. And it's a lot of good, good trees and vegetation there and other activities for families to enjoy and, and dogs. We have a lot of dogs that leave that park, so we're glad to, glad to have them. Anyway, our, our board was thinking that, that we needed to ask for a couple more members. Like I said, we have eleven, but there's a lot of interest in the arboretum. People want, want to serve and, and show their respect and, and ideas for the arboretum. And so we're asking the council to approve appointing two more board members, at-large members. And also, Rhett, when he joined the board, he was president of New Leaf, but now he's not president of New Leaf. And the position that he, that he occupies is called for the president of New Leaf. We'd like to change the name of that position to just an at-large New Leaf Society member. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. And if you have any comments, Rhett, I didn't explain everything well.
Well, we've got extremely active advisory board, and it's the first advisory board we put together for this arboretum, and they're all plant people. So, you know, we all deal in Latin names and, you know. So anyway, we look at, we, we did this to set the standards for this new facility on what we, what we can accept, what we cannot accept, what type of gifts we're going to give, what kind of collections of plants we're going to put in. So we've done that, and we intended to do that as issues come up. But we'd like to get input from the users of the park that are not trained in horticulture and that science. So we think if we had two more positions, we can come on the use of the park on a regular basis, or the citizen, or whoever, get user input on what they like to see. And so we think this is just natural growth of this advisory board because we're all learning. This is an arboretum, and it's new. None of us are trained in arboretum management, but we do have one person on board that is, Dr. Lader, who served with U S B A's Arboretum in the past. And he is the director of the Conservatory for High Water and Forest, which is large collections of plants from around the world. So we have the technical expertise. But we think we need this time to get user input, what they like to see. So that's why we'd like to expand the board with two more members.
Do you have, Rhett, excuse me, I've interrupted. Do you have names that you would like to bring forth, or is it something that we as a council?
Not at this time. I think we've gone through the normal policy of when all board members
Yeah, we're, we're trying to, we're bringing this to the council this time of the year so John can advertise these positions, put in application process.
Yeah.
And we hope to have two people appointed by July 1st when the, when the new year starts.
Okay, good. Thanks, y'all, for all the hard work you do for the city and the county. I appreciate it.
Arboretum of New Leaf is a nonprofit, as you know. This is our biggest project today. Now, I think we've put in, I've raised 2.7 billion dollars of private dollars in grants to put in this facility. And veterans overlook is all private dollars. So that just shows the commitment of, of the people that live here and what, what they like. And so it's been an honor for me to be a part of that. Thank you for your support.
Any other questions for Mr. Lawes or Mr. Davis? If not, we'll entertain a motion on the resolution as requested.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution as requested, to Jack and Peter.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, Rhett, for being here. We appreciate you and New Leaf, and look forward to working with you and continue this basis. So thank you.
Rhett, I had a conversation today with the manager in Montgomery County, and he has visited over the weekend the arboretum in reference to some conversations evidently that have been had there in Montgomery County. And I didn't tell him that you guys had raised 2.7 million dollars, but, you know, that remains to be seen. But, but I'm just telling you that it, it does get people's attention. And it's, it's, it's a cool facility. That's a cool facility.
I've, I've met farmers there. I've met a family there from Yanceville, who's not just going to Marines. They brought their boy down here to see, you know, that veterans overlook. People come, I've met people from out of town that are coming because you start getting in this, people like to go, they go from arboretum to arboretum, from plant people. And I have people now waiting to gift things. They just need more gifts. But they're waiting to do something that's arboretum. And like Tom says, it's full of dollars, but it's full of moms and babies and children. There's been some prom two weddings there, which we're not supposed to allow, but it happened. There was a wedding in the treehouse not long ago. So you get prom pictures. You can imagine what goes on. It is beautifully maintained. That's what, that is what, it is safe. It's a beautiful place.
Thank you.
And I'll remind the council members, thank you very much for that vote. Our arboretum is nationally certified, and we're a level two certification, which is only three other arboretums in North Carolina that have that certification.
Who are they?
I'm not sure.
Well, we have J C Ross and Arboretum at Ensign State. There's probably the senior arboretum in Winston-Salem, and I suspect it, maybe Arley Gardens Arboretum in Wilmington, and I'm not sure about that.
That the one in Ashburn?
And that, I'm sure the one in Ashburn is.
Yeah. Some of them can be certified as level one.
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Rhett, for being here. Our next item is public comments. We have no public comments listed this evening, so we'll move into council comments. There's only one that I have, and it's the city of Burlington. Our planning department will be hosting a day of historic preservation seminars titled Continuing Our Legacy. And this event is being funded by a grant from the state Historic Preservation Office for Historic Education, and it was awarded to our planning department. So we appreciate all the efforts that went out for that. These seminars will take place on May 11th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at downtown Burlington, at Burlington Beer Works. That's located at 103 East Front Street in historic downtown Burlington. Registration is required by May 1st, and I think council probably received an email inviting you to attend if you wanted to sign up and register. If you didn't get that check with Beverly, and she'll get that to you. Any other council comments this evening?
Yes, I want to publicly thank Ms. Bigelow. She came over to the Burlington School and gave a, gave a dynamic speech to the students about public office and budgets and just a great job. And I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
The pleasure was all mine. Thanks for the invitation. Smart kids, too.
Yeah.
Thank you a lot. I think we had, what, two senators?
Yeah.
Two aspiring senators?
One president?
Yeah.
I'm afraid he's not going to make it. I didn't want to say that in front of the school, but a good young man, but he's not going to make it.
Well, you know, council member while paid Mayor Protem Owen when he came, so you need to be sure you get your check.
He'll agree.
Oh, man. Any other council comment?
Thank you.
Well, I had enjoyed toying with the fire department on last Thursday. It was another honor and a privilege to see what those men and women are doing each day. Most surprisingly was coming through, waking up out of your sleep and going down the little hole which up in your boots and stuff. I think that we really don't realize the impact. We know that we called the fire department, but just being able to see that in real life and see those young men and women, it was inspiring. And I'm glad to support, kind of be there with you guys. And thank you for coming out to see me as well and just opening the doors.
Thank you.
Until Station 5, I will make it by to see them. They were out when I stopped by.
They truly appreciate your business. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chief, how many calls have we got a year now?
Just over 10,000.
Do the math on that. Rest of that number for many guys, 10,000.
Every single station, we stopped at all six. One was out. But every single station during that 10-minute time, they got a call. Every single one of them. We were on my short visit there. So I know that they're rolling, and we're appreciative. And I definitely want to uplift that. And I'm very close with the Burlington Police Department, so I wanted to show that same support for you, anger guy, men and women.
Thank you. Any other council comments? I think we do have a request for closed session. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd ask this.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd ask the city council vote on closing session. NCGS 1431811, ladies and gentlemen, for the purpose of considering legal counsel on the handling of claims involving the city in existing legal actions, including the case of William versus Davis, Watkins, and the City of Burlington. Now, Mays County School, 23, CBS 253, and second case, Greenamire versus Butler and Honeycutt. Now, Mays County District Court case, D4, CBD 340.
So we have a request for closed session. Is there a motion?
Motion closed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye. Aye. Any opposed? At this time, we will enter into closed session.
We're in the square.
We gotta do it just for fun.
I got a copy of the script here. What you say?
Sneak it out.
Sneak it out.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, will we go back into open session?
We have a full house now. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to go back into open session.
So moved.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in open session. At this time, we will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good job, Paul.